Jane, if you want to start.
Oh, Ken's not going to be able to.
Jane, or Janelle's trying to call him. I mean, we're working. If you want to wait for him, it's up to you.
We're already six minutes late, so I guess we should start.
He's on. Can you hear you, Penny? He's just trying to get his audio.
Okay. I don't... You mean, he's on video?
He says he's in here. Is it with your cellphone, Ken? Should it be your last four digits?
There he is.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
So Ken's logged in.
Ken is getting ready to be popped up right now. Okay, Ken, start your video and then you can turn your mic on whenever you want to. All right. Ta-da. All right, I think everybody's in.
Okay. So we are at a special meeting of the Flagler Beach City Commission. It is July 20th, 2020. And we are here to discuss and have any possible action in regard to the city manager. We will also have a discussion and possible action related to incentive for easement donations for the Dunes-related project.
Right now, Jane, we are opening into the workshop meetings. Or actually, that's the special meeting that comes after the workshop. So the first one is the workshop.
Right. And both of these things... Oh, I think, no, all right, I'm reading from the wrong paper. Sorry. We will have a special meeting after the workshop. This is very disconcerting where I can't see anybody. Debbie, can you hear me?
She has to turn her... She has to turn her microphone on.
Sorry. Sorry, Jane. Do you want me to kick it off?
No, I want you to have it on.
Okay, I'm here.
Okay. You were the one who asked, ultimately asked for this meeting. Do you wish to start, or do you want somebody else to start?
No, no, no. I can start. I just want to say, Larry, I know it wasn't your finest hour at the last month's commission meeting, but residents, no matter how much they frustrate you, they frustrate you, need to be treated with respect. In addition to the meeting, a resident asked to meet me in person to share an unpleasant exchange they had with you at a first Friday event as well. They felt you were trying to provoke an unpleasant exchange by cursing at him and his wife. So my intention is not to terminate your employment at this time, but I would like to see a formal warning written and kept on file during your tenure. So, and I would like to hear, obviously, your side of the story as well, as well as others.
Okay. Does any other commissioner wish to make a statement at this time, or should we have Larry respond?
Can you hear me yet?
I can hear you, yes.
You can hear me?
But I... Before, yeah, I can hear you, but before you start, I think that was Larry that was just talking.
Okay, I'll be quiet then.
I'm sorry. I'm at a disadvantage because I don't see anything here.
It was Ken who was trying to chime in.
I wish that, Ken. Okay. You're gonna have to help me here. Ken, did you wish to make a statement?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. That's all. A general comment, and that'll be it.
Okay. Would you do so, please?
Okay. I'd just like to say, you know, I think that, you know, Larry recognized that his actions were unprofessional and uncalled for. But I also would like to point out that, you know, we're all not without error, without mistakes, and we all make mistakes. And I think that it's also incumbent on the commission to ensure, as we have done now, that the situations that occurred during that particular meeting don't occur again in order to provoke or encourage anyone to act in any professional, unprofessional manner. But, you know, I know that Mr. Newsom, you know, I've talked to him, and he said he admits that, you know, he should have been a little bit more professional. And I think, you know, he's very sincere about that, so I look forward to hearing his statement at this point, and we can move on. We've got a lot of work to do.
Okay. Rick, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, Jane. Right button. Okay, there we go. Yeah, just, we've... It's a couple of times, it's reached a point that there had to be a couple of interventions with some situations, and hopefully, we can... I'm sure Larry's learned from each of those episodes. And, but I'm kind of, I'm kind of like with Debbie that maybe there ought to be some sort of... Some sort of probation or something of that sort, so that if this happens again, then maybe something more stringent can be done.
Okay. And Eric, are you there?
I'm here. I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. And Linda?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. And whatever I was going to say has pretty much been said already. So Larry, now it's your turn.
Well, no, I appreciate what the board is saying, and I don't disagree. I do, I do feel like that, you know, after doing this business for 25 years, that I did act inappropriately. Not saying I wasn't provoked, but when you're in the business that every one of you as commissioners are in, and what I'm in, you know, we should, we should turn the other cheek. I'll tell you, you know, as long as it's not a personal attack on me or my wife, you know, I need to, I need to do a better job at, you know, withholding, you know, what I say, not what I feel, but what I say. I think that, you know, and I've been pretty good at it, you know, as a county administrator, and for some reason, over the last few months, you know, I'll be the first one to admit that... Let me keep it simple. I should have kept my mouth shut. And no matter what happened with the public, you know, my job is to still make sure that I look out the betterment of Flagler Beach. And I don't disagree, Debbie, that potential, that you, you guys, if you guys want to put something in my file, or you want to put me on probation, I'm okay with that. I am. I need to be called a task. I'm okay with that. And I can promise you one thing, with you listening and everybody else listening, it's not going to happen again. It's not. I just need to understand that, you know, in Flagler Beach, law people, they're, you know, everybody's entitled to their own opinion. That's the First Amendment. My father fought in the Army, my brother fought in the Army to make sure that everybody's entitled to their First Amendment. Sometimes they may overstep their limits of the First Amendment when it comes to how they talk to somebody else. But, you know, we're supposed to be above that. I'm supposed to be above that. I'm supposed to look the other way, except that they don't agree with Larry Newsom, except that, you know, no matter what I said, they don't agree with it, and I didn't do it. And shame on me for that. So I am asking for a second chance. I'm asking to be put on task. And I'm asking for the board to understand that, and if I've embarrassed the board, with that, I apologize. Because I really had no intention of embarrassing this board. If you remember when I interviewed just under four years ago, my job is to make this board look good. And quite frankly, over the years, I thought I've done a pretty good job. But it's amazing that it only takes a couple of months for me to screw things up, and I did. And, you know, and I've had a lot of consultation with my wife, which is the best person to have consultation with, because she's going to tell me exactly. And she looked at the meeting. She's, she's the first person who's going to tell me, you know, what were you thinking? Well, I'm not going to blame it on my health. I'm not going to blame it on anything. I'm going to blame it on being stupid. And I apologize for that.
Okay. Are you finished, Larry? I don't want to interrupt you.
No, 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 no. I'm done groveling unless I need to anymore.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to add, or to what they said before, or ask Larry any questions?
I would, Jane. Rick?
Go ahead.
Uh, Larry, your apology is accepted. Yes, it was embarrassing to, to the commission and, and the city as a whole, I believe. So if we can avoid this in the future, I'm sure that it'll be back to, back to the way things were in the beginning. I'm looking forward to having you back full-time and moving forward, getting, getting some things done with, that have been put on the back burner here lately. So... I'm sorry, Larry.
Commissioner, if I can say, I, I'm a firm reliever in that, and I think that when you as a board brought into Quorum, like I say, I work for a county of 320,000. I, I think that, you know, decorum is, is most important for both sides of the, of the dais, not just staff and not just the commission. I think decorum is important when it comes to the public that shows up. And, and I think that helps us, because at the end of the day, one thing I do look at is that after, after my tenure here, that I realize I've rubbed a very few people the wrong way, which is surprising, because typically, in my position, I have to tell a lot of people no that you can't do this, or you can't... Like, but I'll say this, as a, as a civil servant, my goal was never to say no. My goal was to find a reason to say yes. And so I do, I do admit that you're right. I did embarrass you, and for the board itself, I want everybody to know that, in, in deep sincerity, that I do apologize if I've embarrassed the board. Because that was never anything that I've done before. And it's something that truly, that eating humble pie is, is something that I'm always willing to do, and I'm willing to admit that. And so to every board member and mayor, I apologize. I can't apologize enough about embarrassing you with that. But I think that the Quorum policy is also going to keep me from being put in that position, as well as keeping you as a board from being put in that position. As far as the order... I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Larry. Yeah, you know, there's been a lot of feedback from a lot of residents and people who've been here a long time. And most of them have talked about how you have been the most professional city manager this city's had. So glad to have you and hope to keep you. And we'll just get back to, get things back to normal and move forward.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm done, Jane.
I think we might have lost Jane.
Oh, no.
All right, your vice chair.
All right. If y'all don't mind, while Jane's off, what I'd like to do is just go down the list and, you know, for comments. Oh, Jane's back. But Deborah, did you have any comments for Larry?
I don't. I don't. Larry, I've gotten a lot of emails for you and against you, obviously. I, like, like I said before, I'm not looking to ask you to resign, to terminate you, but I truly, you know, being in the corporate world and holding people accountable, I would really still like to have a warning letter drawn up.
I welcome that.
I'd also like to hear if there's any public comments as well.
And Jane, I see that you're back, so I'll turn the meeting back over to you. And we were just going around the room, seeing if anybody had any comments.
Okay. And I did hear what Debbie's... Well, I heard what Rick said, and I heard what Larry responded, and so I think I didn't miss anything. I managed to sign on through my own account, not the city's. So we had, Debbie was asking what the public comment was. I did see one come up. Penny, do you have it?
And Jane, while we're waiting on Penny, I also have a comment when that comes up.
Okay.
I have a comment from Mary Lau. She says, "I'm writing today..." I'm going to have to turn off, sorry. "...to share my support of Larry Newsom as our city manager. He has operated in a high-stress environment for most of his time as city manager. On a day-to-day basis, he and his teams are responsible for land beaches, pier, intracoastal, and responding to the needs of the people in these areas as well. This includes residents and visitors alike. He and his staff steered our great city through the preparation for and recovery from three hurricanes. They have had to address the damage to A-1A, the flooded, the damage to the pier, the beaches, and the walkovers, and more. They oversaw the rework of A-1A and the Dune restoration projects to date, and the constantly changing traffic patterns. Then came coronavirus and COVID-19 and all the associated madness. All of these highly, all, all these have high visibility and, too, an impact on the residents and our city staff. At times, patience runs low and tension is high on both sides. Do I think it's a free pass? No, but I do believe it's time for a restart again on both sides. I do not believe that we can put this at all at Larry's feet when others are argumentative, attacking, and confrontational. I too share in getting us to this point. There should be standards and expectation on how Larry and his staff are treated if we expect them to always treat others with respect. That goes both ways. Larry is a great city manager, and we benefit from his passion, experience, and extensive knowledge of the local, state, and federal governments. Thank you, Mary Lau." And I am looking at my email to see if there's anything else.
There's a Zoom chat from Helen Kramer. And Drew, I'm going to need your help with this. The question is, who's paying for a sick leave? And it says, "Apologize to the citizens of Flagler Beach."
Your question to me is, who's paying for the sick leave?
Yeah.
It's the accrued sick leave, no different than any other employee.
Okay. I just thought we weren't supposed to talk about being sick, so I, that's why I wanted you to...
It's just being in terms of whatever, whether it's city manager or any other employee, it's accrued sick leave. But yes, you're not talking about in-house, but yes, sick leave is paid from the sick leave bank.
Okay. And Larry, would you care to make a statement apologizing to the citizens? I think you did, but if you would like to repeat what you said?
Well, I have no problem, Commissioner. It's, it's, first of all, I do apologize when citizens, no matter how they feel, because I know it's a tough time right now for everybody. And I know one thing I've learned over the years is that citizens tend to take what maybe happened at the federal level or even at the state level, and they want to take it out on the, on the local political side, whether it's governmental. I mean, when I first got here, I used to listen to people yell and scream in City Hall. And, you know, I've always been very good at calming people down, so... The apology is, is that for some reason, over the last few months, and again, I'm not going to blame it on being sick. I don't blame it on anything. Maybe, maybe just like the email from Mary Lau, I mean, let's face it, and I warned you guys when you hired me that disasters tend to follow me. So, and, and I didn't lie. I mean, it's Matthew, Irma. So maybe, maybe that stress kind of caught up with me a little bit. But the one thing I will apologize to anybody that's a citizen, that, that be cordial with us as governmental employees, and I will ensure, I will ensure, whether it's me, anybody else, we're going to work for solutions. And if anybody feels like I'm not working with you, with that, I apologize. Because I, I know it's tough out there. I know it's tough out there even now with the virus. So my apology goes out based on my past actions over the last few months. And my apology will go out to, to ensure my staff, because, you know, we're not exempt. You're not exempt of the pain and suffering that's going on right now when it comes to this virus or anything else. So the only thing I can say is, I'm going to apologize, but not only apologize, but I'm going to work even harder at being more realistic and communicating with the public when it comes to this. But I, I do want, I do want the board to understand one thing, is we are in a position, and I say "we," it's a board and myself, we are in positions where sometimes the citizens are not going to get what they want. And for that, I apologize. Because I really want everybody to be happy in this, in this, in this city. And sometimes that's going to be a challenge, but my apology goes out the way I handled certain things over the last few months. You know, you can still work with people and, and understand them and talk to them. So I, I really think I stepped out of line, and my apology is sincere.
Thank you, Dan.
Comment emailed in, Jane, if you would like me to read it.
Sure.
This is from... It says, "I'd like to make a public comment regarding your city manager for tonight's meeting. I was in attendance at the June meeting in the city chambers and observed the uncomfortable exchange that occurred during public comments between your city manager and multiple residents. Mr. Newsom's response was unprofessional. I commend the commission for calling a meeting to discuss Mr. Newsom's actions. I encourage the commission and Mr. Newsom to address his actions head-on and move on to more important matters of the city. Residents deserve an explanation and an apology. We all have laps in judgment now and again, but our city leaders are held to a higher standard and should act accordingly." And that's signed, and not the emails from Stephanie Lee. I don't know if she was writing it for someone else, or if it's her.
All right. Penny, can you read the last half of it? And I'm getting here that they can't hear you. It's because you're off to the side.
Could I read? You want me to read that again?
If, if you don't mind.
I'm working on two computers. Sorry. It says, "I'd like to make a public comment regarding our city manager for tonight's meeting. I was in attendance at the June meeting in the city chambers and observed the uncomfortable exchange that occurred during public comments between our city manager and multiple residents. Mr. Newsom's response was unprofessional. I commend the commission for calling a meeting to discuss Mr. Newsom's actions and encourage both the commission and Mr. Newsom to address his actions head-on and then to move on to more important matters of the city. Residents deserve an explanation and an apology. We all have laps in judgment now and again, but our city leaders are held to a higher standard, as they should be, and should act accordingly." And it's signed, anonymous, but I have the emails from, so I don't know if you'll be able to read them.
Okay, thank you. I also have a message here that the YouTube link isn't working.
I, I noticed that when I tried to link live, and it wants me to verify the account again, which I just did on my phone, and it's saying it takes time. So I guess because I'm not... Let's say, like when the county was doing this for us, that their YouTube link was Flagler County YouTube. Well, I don't get that because I'm a new subscriber. I'm a new channel, so I haven't established the presence there. I haven't posted any videos there. So they won't invest in me to give me that name, Official City of Flagler Beach YouTube, until I do that. So I'm, I'm working my way through this. This is the Zoom. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure I can get the Zoom up onto YouTube for later viewing if I can't get it on there now, but I do have the Zoom recording.
Okay. Okay, I'm not seeing anything else. I think that Larry has...
Eric's trying to get your attention.
You're muted.
Oh. Yeah?
Jane, I still have a comment for Larry.
I'm sorry?
As I said, Jane, I still have a comment for Larry when that time comes.
Okay, and I'm just looking through the comments that are coming on the Zoom web chat. And I think we've addressed that Larry has apologized several times now. I don't think we need to have him apologize again. So Eric?
Still, all right. So Larry, when we hired you, we hired a executive four years ago, and we also hired a human. And to think that we can go past four years without any type of hiccup, I think, is unrealistic. I think this, this type of thing, just like any relationship that you have, is going to have ups and downs and things come up. And this is just part of the job. This is a standard employee management. You've got a great track record, and, you know, that this doesn't wash any of that away. And it is to be expected over a course of time for there, for there not to be perfection, because you, in fact, are human. As far as note to files or anything like that goes, my opinion on that is, it's not necessary, and I'll tell you why. It's because this entire process is documented and it's public record. There's no need to add anything additional. At the executive level, and I've managed a lot of executives and directors, and the expectation is that the executive or director comes up with their own performance improvement plan and executes it. It's not something that would need to be managed at, at a lower level than that, Larry. We would just give you... You know, that's up for you to, to work on, on your own, and, and improve on, on your own. This, this is a one-time conversation, I think, is probably the, the most blunt way of stating, you know, as far as this particular issue goes, but I think you've done a great job, and it's... I think you've done a great job and it's definitely to be expected over the course of time to have a couple of hiccups, but that, that's just part of being a regular human.
Hey, anybody else?
Jane, I have one more from Care Pageant, and she asked, what will the probation entail?
Um, yeah, I have that on here too from somebody. That's something we will talk about at the special meeting. We're not to be taking any actions at this meeting. I made note of it, that it's something to discuss at the next meeting.
Ken and the mayor had their hands up, Jane.
Oh, okay, I'm, I'm only seeing one of you at a time now. Mayor, you had something to say?
Um, no, I talked to Larry one-on-one about this. And I think we need to move forward. Whatever action you want to take, you know, we'll do at the next meeting. However, we do an evaluation on our city manager every year. I believe it's time to do that evaluation. And I would think that that, any concerns could be covered in that evaluation. But Larry has been you know, great for this city. I also appreciate how he looks after our employees because let's face it, our employees shouldn't be yelled at by residents. They shouldn't be yelled at when their water bill goes up. They shouldn't be yelled at if their garbage isn't picked up. And I know they appreciate it and that he actually stands up for them because the buck stops with him. So rather than yelling at our employees and supervisors, you know, Larry will try and make things right for anybody. But I do appreciate that he, you know, like I said, if you want to yell at me, it's part of the $8,000 I get paid a year. But to yell at the city employees, just that I, I will never accept that, and I am glad that he stands up for them.
And I agree with you. Anybody else?
Jane, this is Ken. Oh, yeah, I just want to act out what Commissioner Eric Cooley said. Again, I, I asked for the last three years of Larry's performance ratings, and I went through them page by page and read every single line and everyone's comments. And he's had a stellar performance rating over the last three years. There's a, I mean, on the ratings of five, there were a couple of fours from maybe one or two commissioners, but other than that, they were all fives with very complimentary rating remarks in his performance rating. And you know, and as I said earlier, you know, I, I think he's done a great job. And you know, when you've worked that long, then there are some times when you might, you know, fall. We're all human. But by the same token, I'd also like to say, you know, Larry did apologize to the public. But I think the public also needs to be cognizant of there are elected officials and the, and the staff as well. You know, individuals should not be yelling and screaming at people. They should not be getting up out of their chairs or doing anything of that nature. And I think that's one of the reasons why we established the policies that we did last week in order to, you know, hold that kind of thing at bay, at a bay so that it doesn't occur again. But, um, you know, and we saw some of that demonstrated at our last meeting where, you know, we had individual attendees that were not conducting themselves in a very civil manner either. So those kinds of things can be very evoking. We're all human. But I'm with the rest of the commissioners. I think Larry's done a great job. He's apologized. Time for us to move on. That's all I have from Commissioner.
Anybody else? And Penny, do you have anything else? Penny?
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other emails that came in?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I have a couple of comments here, but they really don't pertain, so I'm not going to go through them.
I honestly thought I disabled that, so.
I don't mind reading them and answering them, but if they don't pertain.
It's just too much for me to do to watch comments there.
Well, you've, you've got enough going on. I don't, I don't mind doing that. All right, so if we're done with this part of the meeting, I guess we will ask for a motion to adjourn. And we will then move on to the special meeting.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Okay. Now we will move up on to why did I lose people?
You shouldn't. They're all.
Okay, there we are. I don't know. My computer's in a bad mood. Um, we will move on to the special meeting. Penny, do you need some time?
Ama'am.
As a special meeting of the Flagler Beach City Commission, it is July 20th. And we're picking up right after the 5:30 workshop. And the first item on the agenda is any possible action regarding the city manager. Anybody have any comments they wish to make as far as any actions they wish taken?
I'll start out.
Okay.
In light of the, the comments that I've made earlier and in light of the fact that Mr. Newsom recognized that he made a mistake, one of the things that I would say is that, you know, at a minimum, maybe a letter, but I don't even really see that as a, as any type of action should be taken. I think the mayor was correct in that it's time for performance ratings to be given to Mr. Newsom. And I think it would be appropriate at that time to be reflective in any way that we consider necessary at that time.
Okay. Debbie?
Um, I disagree. I, I've talked to Larry about this as well. Do I think he's going to do it again? Absolutely not. But we never could be 100%. I'm sorry, Larry. I do think a written warning needs to go just in your personnel file. That's my opinion.
Okay, Drew, did you want to say something? Oh, yeah, I thought I saw it. Anybody else?
Yeah, I agree.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with Jane. There, I mean, there have been two interventions here that, that were required. And I, I just think, I agree with Debbie, that there ought, should be some note taken and you know, attached to his his file in one way or another.
Okay, um, what I thought we should do is if, just to see that we make it more formal, and Drew, Drew, you let me know if I'm wrong on this, that we ask for a motion that a, a letter. I don't want to call it a letter, it's not a letter of reprimand. What, what is it, Debbie, that you're looking for?
Letter of memorandum. Is that a, are you more comfortable with that term?
Yeah. Okay. So Drew, would it be appropriate to ask for a motion then on that?
You can. And would you, is this something you would like me to draft and bring forward?
Okay, I was going to offer too, but I'd be very happy for you to do it. I thought as Chair I would do it, but.
It's, it's the board's discretion. I just offer because I, I'd be, I'm more than capable of doing it, but if the Chair would like to do it, I will feed it to you.
All right, so whoever makes the motion should include who would write the letter if we in fact write one. So Debbie, I'm gathering.
I'm sure I could, sure I could make a motion to approve a memorandum-type letter to be put in Larry's personnel file, written by Drew Smith.
Thank you.
Chair question?
Well, let's have a second and then we'll.
I'll check in it.
Okay. Eric?
What exactly is going to be in the memorandum? We all know what happened, but outside of that, what's going to be in there?
I will capture that event and the discussion that was had tonight and kind of both sides of it. And kind of put it all together, and it will come forward to you to actually vote on accepting that, that letter or memorandum. That's how I see it playing out.
Okay.
But answer your question.
I'm sorry, Joe?
I was asking Eric if that was responsive to.
Eric, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
All right, any comments, any other comments on the motion? Okay, I, I know that the mayor had pointed out that it was time for evaluation, or I think Ken, you had said something too. We generally don't do the evaluation till after the budget. So we can include the budget in the evaluation. So it's my comment that we hold off on the evaluation till after the budget and that we do do this memorandum for the, for his, Larry's file. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands.
If actually, since it's hard to, any to collect, if you could do a roll call.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellhumor?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryan?
No.
Commissioner Cooley?
Yes, the motion.
Jeremily?
Yes. And the other thing that was brought up was a possible probation. Is that something people are still wanting to do? Rick, are you looking to talk?
Uh, yeah, I, I will. I rescind that, that thought. However, I think it would be helpful to have, have an evaluation sooner as opposed to later. And get, so Larry has some guidance as to what people are thinking. And it'll make his job easier in the long run.
All right, well, let's do two separate things. Let's stick to the probation thing now. You said you rescinded that?
I was responding to what you just said, Jane. That's all. I, I'll withdraw my, my thoughts of having any probation.
Okay. Any other comments on that?
I'm opposed to any type of probation or discipline like that.
I am as well.
Thank you.
Me too. Okay, so that one's dead. Then the evaluation, we can do it now. But as I said, we've traditionally felt that it was better to do it after the budget so that we could include that budget process as part of the evaluation. So your thoughts? Eric?
Um, my thoughts are if we have anything that we need to cover with Larry, that's what this meeting is for. There's no reason to change evaluations. Evaluations are an annual thing you do with any employee. The, the time doesn't change based on their job performance. It has no bearing on the date of the evaluation. It's an annual thing. Now, as far as if we need to cover something with Larry concerning his job performance, that's what this meeting is. And if there are concerns about it, then that needs to be put on the table at this point. Not moving an evaluation to cover what we should be covering now.
Okay. Somebody else?
Madam Chair, can I speak?
Yeah, I was just waiting to see if there was anybody else. Go ahead, Larry. Go ahead.
First of all, I'm, during, during this budget process, there's a couple of things. One is I'm not asking for any pay adjustment. So if the evaluation's actually going to hinder on that, then you can do the evaluation whenever you want to. Now, if it hinders on my job as far as that goes, that's completely up to the board. I think the board has been very kind to me. You've been very kind to my staff. But I'm not asking for anything additional when it comes to my salary. The other thing is is the, the main thing about the evaluation, I do understand there's still a lot of things to do that when it comes to the evaluation. And I haven't been through all my evaluations, but if I need to meet with you as commissioners and mayor individually to talk about my evaluation prior to it being public, I think that's appropriate. I really do. And I think you really, I mean, I want to know where you stand with Larry Newsom when it comes to an evaluation before Flagler Live or the News Journal understands where you stand with Larry Newsom. So that's the only thing I can ask. But I did want you to understand that my employees right now are going through an evaluation process because of potential pay adjustments, which is cost of living. We're talking about 2%, which cost of living is like 1.6. So they're being evaluated, as long as they meet standards or exceed standards, that's what I'm looking at for the employees because you as a board, and I realize with two new board members, that you as a board has taken darn good care of my employees. Actually, you're taking darn good care of your employees. Just like the mayor had said. So, and we implemented the valuation process more so for them just to make sure they're going to get some type of adjustment, whether or not. Anybody that falls short of not, not meeting standards, it's zero. Just so you'll know that. And I know we'll discuss that in the budget cycle. I just wanted to be very clear. Your, your evaluation on me is to keep my job. But I'm not asking for any additional compensation this year to my board, not because of this situation. Just because I feel like now is not the time. So that's my comment. Thank you.
To me, there's so much more to evaluation or to the budget than salaries. So I, I would prefer to wait to do an evaluation after we go through the whole budget cycle, but.
I don't disagree. I think that's a smart move.
All right, so Jane?
Yeah.
So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna change this and do it at a different time each year, or what? I mean, we did it in July last year.
The, we did his evaluation before the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
I have to go back and look.
Okay, um, I, I'll go along with what Larry's saying. I've been wanting to, to go over last year's evaluation with him for about a year now, so I guess now might be a good time to sit down and have a good one-on-one about some things. I, I'm not going to air all, all my laundry right now, as Eric suggested. There's a lot of things that I need to talk to Larry about, and hopefully we can get back to where we were in the beginning and have a nice, smooth run in the city.
Any other comments or actions that people wish to take? Like, do we need to vote on when we're doing the evaluation? I guess we should. Somebody want to make a motion? I can't.
Larry, did you just, did I just hear you say you would prefer it be after the budget cycle?
Just, actually, it doesn't matter when you guys want to do my evaluation. I'm just letting you know that you can do it before, you can do it after, but it's not going to change like staff's evaluations. It's not going to change based on what my salary is. My evaluation is based on keeping my job, not making more money.
I think it might be better to, to, to put it off a little bit this year, mainly because of our two new commissioners having not worked with you very much up to this point. Give them a little give them a better chance of giving you a fair evaluation or an accurate one in their minds.
Okay, Linda?
I was just going to say, why don't we speak with Liz about this? Because I think we've done it different times throughout the year, and it, sometimes it, what, we did do it before budget because that was determining his raise or the raise at a whole. So, you know, and then we have to, I think it's, we put it on the agenda as well, don't we, Penny, to discuss the results?
Yes.
Do.
Yes.
You know, I agree with Rick. I think it would be good for the two new commissioners who haven't really been on the board. who haven't really been on the board too long to maybe have some more interaction, but maybe from an HR standpoint, talk to Liz and see where it's at when we normally do it and go from there.
Anybody else?
Sounds like a plan.
All right, so we're, we're going to talk to Liz and then we'll decide. So we're not deciding today.
Yeah, we can do that at a future time, I assume.
Okay. Ken, will you, can we, I don't know, people move their hands, I can't tell.
No, I'm just holding my head up. It's not that I'm going to sleep, I'm just holding my head.
I know, I do that, too. Okay, nobody else has anything? Larry, was there anything more you wanted to say?
No, ma'am, I appreciate everybody's support.
Okay. All right, so I guess we're done with number two, and we can move on to number three. Drew, do you feel like we need to do anything more on number two?
No, ma'am, I have the direction I need for what you assigned to me, so I'm okay.
Okay. All right, number three, discussion and possible action related to an incentive fee easement donations for Dune project.
This is what came up during commission comments at the last meeting, I believe Commissioner Cooley brought it up, potentially doing something like a waiver for permits for new Dune walkovers or rebuilds, reconfigurations, reconstructions of existing Dune walkovers. As I said, the one thing I had to look into the last meeting, it turns out that is problematic, but I think I found an alternative, but I want to run that by you. The reason why the waivers do not work is because the permitting process, those, when I pay a permit, I am paying the cost of running that permitting program. And while there's nothing expressed that you can't waive permit costs, there's enough to draw the conclusion that you cannot, on a case-by-case basis, waive permit costs. Because if I'm not paying the cost of my permit, that means you're paying more if that program is running as it's supposed to, which is essentially level. So the workaround, though, if you're okay with it, is I do believe there's enough public purpose here for us to justify the use of general fund dollars, where the city would pay the permit cost, the permitting cost, or the permit review, application and review cost for a Dune walkover, so that the permitting program is still collecting what it should collect, but it's collecting for that function on those properties, it's collecting that from the city's general fund, so it's more of a ledger movement instead of a true waiver, because it's still getting paid into the permitting department, which deals with my concern. I did run that by the county attorney's office to make sure it wasn't giving them any discomfort, because it does, it is a little bit more of a, could be categorized more as a compensation. They did not have any heartburn over that program. Al did point out to me, though, and remind me, to remind you, that if you do it for the core project, that we really need to do it for the non-core project as well. So when figuring out what the impact to the general fund would be, that's, that number ought to be, we ought to be sure that we look at that number of, what is the overall cost of this if we're pulling general fund dollars to pay for those permit costs for Dune walkovers?
Drew, Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
First of all, with the building department being a enterprise fund.
It's not an enterprise fund, and that's important. That's kind of the distinction. An enterprise fund is allowed to make a profit. The building department cannot make a profit, and that's the problem.
So we have to, we have to move general fund dollars over to the building department?
Correct. If you were going, if the city wanted to find a way of paying for those permit review costs, yes, it would be general fund, the building department, so that that
I'm sorry, Drew, is that for private or for public Dune walkovers?
We're talking private Dune walkovers.
So we're going to use, you have to help me out here, just to clarify. Am I trying to put you on the spot? So we're going to use general fund tax dollars to pay permitting for a private Dune walkover that only the private citizens can use as a compensation to allow for this beach renourishment.
Correct, that's public purposes.
To understand, because, and I'm sure like you, to me, that just doesn't sound right. And it, because what we're, what we're getting, and I don't know exactly what these, these properties, and I've talked to DOT, even while I'm on medical leave, and I know Liz would punch me in the nose for doing it, but I've talked to DOT about us, you know, because there are some properties out there that have the attorneys from, I guess, from wherever, and they're looking for some type of compensation. But like you say, once we do it for one.
You're doing it for everyone.
To me, it's a Pandora's box. Am I correct? Once we do it for one, whether it's because of Dune restoration, does it go away after Dune restoration, or is it something that the board's going to be stuck with, to where we have to put general funds over in the building department for the permits?
My thought would be is that you, if you went that route, that you would bracket it. So you would both have, my thought was a five-year term, where after five years it would expire, there would not be any authorization to it, and it would be a one-time only. So if it was a, if it was a new build, that, that bill, that, that permit for construction, the application fees would be waived. If it was a reconstruction, reconfiguration, the application fee would be or not waived, but would be paid from the general fund. So it would be one-time only per property. And so that's why I point out, you're talking core and non-core project, you've got to consider, you've got a worst-case scenario is, every one of those properties comes in and asks to build, to build a Dune walkover.
Right. And Commissioner Bellium, I know your hand's up, and I apologize, but I have to ask this question. What if we agreed as a city to help them through the permitting process, and, but not pay for the permitting fees, like the DEP permits, the DOT permits? Because you have to get all those.
We would only be talking about the city's, the building permit application fee. That's the only one on the table.
But I will tell you, because a lot of these properties, you know, the building, the building department is basically number three on the list. You still have to go through DEP, you still have to go through DOT, based on clear zone requirements, and then you, then you submit plans to the building department. And all I'm saying is, is that potentially, maybe we agree to help them through the state permitting process as compensation. Is that a thought?
What does that mean, Larry, helping them?
Well, you still have to go through TRHatch, you still have to go through DOT to actually build your Dune walkover. You still have to get permits from them. Rick, Rick only approves the construction, that it meets the Florida Building Code. But even before you get to Rick McFadden, you have to go through those two agencies before you can get to Rick McFadden. I know, because we've been, we've been dealing with this for quite some time. And that's not even, that's after turtle season. See, with turtle season, you're going through fish and wildlife as well. So all I'm saying is, maybe we offer to help them through that, which is, it's not, it's not an easy gauntlet. But they still have to pay the permitting fees for the construction, because they still have to be inspected, plans have to be submitted. And who ends up with the liability? Because, and I think, I think, I think that's a Liz question also, from a risk management standpoint, is that, you know, we're going to ask our building department to say, okay, there's no charge. Because we went through that with Superior, and we saw what happened at 21st and 20th.
We would still inspect normally, though, Larry. This doesn't change the inspection process.
Well, I'm just asking, because I want to cover all, all the issues. But they still have to go through the state first, when it comes to a Dune walkover.
And to just clarify, when you say to help them, you mean to sit with them with the paperwork and say, this is what you have to do? We're not, you're not talking about money, you're talking about physically helping them through the paperwork?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Because that's, it's, it's not the easiest process in the world, getting those permits either. And I just wanted to bring that up as food for thought before we even get to the building department.
Okay.
Anyway, everybody's got their hands raised, so I'm.
Yeah, okay. Rick, and then Eric.
All right. First of all, we got, I think it's 13 holdouts, maybe it's, maybe it's 11 holdouts on 13 properties, or whatever it is. I don't, you know, even if we were able to create some incentive program, I doubt that all 11 would be, would take advantage of it. It's my understanding, we're, we're at a point now that it's all or nothing. So I don't know what, what the permitting fees are, but they're, it's not crazy expensive.
Not at all.
So I don't know, I just, I think it may be a little, a little too late to, to catch the attention of all the people, we really need to catch the attention of and get it done. But unfortunately, we'll have to play it out.
Do we even know what the cost is, maybe just to buy those easements from the 13 properties? Because I would tell you.
Hey, Larry, don't, don't go there.
I thought, they have to be willing to sell them to start with, so.
Well, I mean, you can't do anything with them, but Drew, I'm always going to take your.
Al's, yeah, Al's looked at it, the county's been working that angle. Don't go there.
Got it.
Okay, Eric?
And Larry, this, maybe this'll bring you up to speed. I think the original concept's gotten diluted somewhat. The, the original concept is, we have taken an approach where we said, all right, well, if you don't sign, we're not going to give you permits so you can do any work because of X reasons, whether it be not stable, the property's not improved enough for it to be stable. Well, rather than take that approach, the concept was, let's do both, we'll take a positive approach also. And the concept of waiving the permit fee is, or even taking it from general and moving it to building department, is it's essentially costing our taxpayers nothing. We're just waiving a fee, that labor gets paid anyways. Rick McFadden's going to get paid for 40 hours a week, whether he's inspecting or whether he's sitting at a desk. And so we have a, something that will cost our taxpayers nothing, even if it moves from general to building, it still costs nothing, it goes from city to city. And it is a olive branch to some of the holdouts to indicate good faith. And we've already gone the other direction, so let's do what we can, add a cost to $0 of our taxpayers to just indicate good faith, and maybe push some of the folks over. Is it, at this point in the game, is it worth it? I would say still yes, because we're doing something, as opposed to doing nothing. You know, if we just sit and wait, then the time expires and it just goes. But at least this way, we're doing something, we're offering them something. We're not going to get into having our taxpayers fork expenses over. And I don't, I don't really like the idea of paying for state licensing and inspections and all that, because now you are doing something that costs our taxpayers money, where it goes to the benefit of other folks for private walkovers. But if all we're doing is just waiving a city fee or moving it from one account to another, it's net zero, and it's just a good faith move. And that was the original concept of.
And Commissioner, it's a good idea. I think one thing we can do, because this project is so extremely important, and I realize now's not the time, but keep in mind that whatever we do as a city, Drew would ask you to coordinate with, without, but maybe it's something that we can do to where, once the TDC becomes fluent again, because right now during the virus, they're not, that potentially we can get refunded through the TDC. Because I think that whatever we do, the beach is not just important to Flagler Beach, the beach is important to Flagler County. And Flagler Beach should have to absorb the cost. So potentially, there's, there's, there's a, there's a couple of ways to look at this, and I do appreciate your opinion, Commissioner, that maybe we go ahead and just get this done, so we don't lose those millions of dollars that the corps is willing to offer. And we do what we got to do on the front end, but we go back on the back end, because that money is, that money can be paid for by the TDC, back to us. You know, regardless of what it's for, it's just they don't have the money right now because of the virus. So I'm, I'm game for anything, I'm just saying that they still have to go through the permitting process with DEP and DOT, and whatever else we have to do for them. If it comes out of our general fund, then we just send the invoice over to the county.
And I would, at this point, say that that's unlikely that you're going to get much buy-in from the county, just because the county has from day one, you know, made this into it's a voluntary donation, it is not about compensation. And when I talked to the county attorney about, about the proposal, he did not have objections to it, but he also wasn't, you know, throwing a party over it either. So I would not.
I'll be happy to talk to Jerry about that.
But we haven't voted on it yet, so don't get.
I will be happy to talk to Jerry about it, once I get direction from the board, because I, and Jerry is very easy to work with. And I do understand that the county is, is, is poor like everybody else right now. But just keep in mind that I do feel like it's not just our beach, it's their beach, too.
Linda?
Um, yeah, I thought it was a great idea. When Eric brought it up, it was definitely worth looking into, but I don't believe those last holdouts, that's going to sway them for $150 permit fee to be waived. They obviously have other reasons for wanting to not sign over those easements. And if we have to provide that to every single private walkover for the city, well, no, I don't think, it was, I think it was a great idea to look into, but I just don't see it being practical. And we need to move forward and find another way to get those people to sign.
Yeah, and Linda, if I may, to put this to rest, or let me ask you a question. I don't see, but you as an attorney has to correct me, I don't see where this falls under an eminent domain, because it's not a safety welfare issue, or is it?
It, it, it could be an eminent domain. It is not, because it is a voluntary acquisition project. So could, could beach renourishment be an eminent domain issue? Yes, that is not the course that has been taken on this project.
An eminent domain takes a couple of years to process. You know that as well as I do. So all I'm saying is, is that whatever options the board wants to pursue, between Drew and I, we'll pursue it. I'm not sure exactly the people that are holdouts, you know, so I'm open to any, any suggestions from the board.
Okay, anybody else? It's my position that it's no longer a monetary issue. I don't think it's reasonable to ask the taxpayers one way or the other to pay for it, whether we're just moving funds from one fund to the other. It's, if we move money from the general fund to the building fund, then it's less money in the general fund for no reason. I think what has seemed to have worked the best is education, education, education. A lot of the neighbors are working very hard. Those who have signed already are still working, and they haven't given up. And they seem to be the ones that are getting through. I think the more that we as a city or the county officials stay out of it, the more receptive those less people will be. That's my opinion. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay. Okay, um, are we going to take any action tonight on this item?
I'm not in favor of it either, Jane, for the same reasons.
Okay, Erica, it was kind of your idea. Do you want to make a motion?
I could, I'm still in favor of it. You know, honestly, if we were to put a term on it of the next five years, the cost of permitting for the entire project area is going to be nominal considering all the walkovers that are there. And, uh, done over a course of years by those owners, the few remaining ones that don't have walkovers or want to rebuild. I, I think it's a very low cost that would be low. I'll let you all shoot it down if you want. I'm going to table, we move forward with it. I'd like to make a motion to move forward with at least offering, uh, what Drew proposed.
I second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion? If not, Penny, I think we should do a roll call.
Since you're taking action, did you have any public comment?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Um, I had one here from Care Paget a few minutes ago. That she, I'm sorry, the one from Care Paget said, the citizen shouldn't have to pay for their permitting fees to gain their support. And that she emailed something to Penny.
Uh, that's her. As a taxpayer, I have a problem with paying for the fees associated with the holdout building fees to build a private walkover that the public will not have access to. I would agree to a waiving of the fee, as Commissioner Cooley said, as it has a zero cost to the citizen. And that's from Care Paget. And then, um, no, that's a response to an email we sent. That was it. I had an email earlier on the other subject that I'll round back to when you're done with this.
Okay, Debbie.
Just a quick question. We would cap it at five years then. Is that the motion?
That is, I guess that was the motion, right, Eric? Scott Fox just sent in.
Right, my public comment on the permit is if we do nothing, we get nothing. And when we have to repair the road, we'll seem like a minimal cost. Safe face for the attorney. It's roll, it's moving as I'm trying to read it.
Yeah, he says omit that and he's laughing. Okay, anybody else? Oh, we have another one.
Jackie, it may not have a cost to the taxpayers at that moment, but down the road, those fees could have been collected and would not be in the fund. Oops, I just clicked the wrong thing. Hold on. I can't see anymore.
That's all she wrote. That's all she wrote. Hey, I don't see any further ones.
That's all I have.
Okay, so we had a motion and we had a second.
Yep, Commissioner Phillips.
Yes to the motion.
Commissioner Bell Hummer.
No.
Commissioner Cooley.
Yes, the motion.
Commissioner Bryan.
Yes to the motion.
Karen Mealy.
No.
Passes three to two, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, that was our agenda.
So with that though, to follow up, I will draft an actual resolution. So you will get to see all of those terms and, and see how it will operate. You actually will get another bite at that apple.
Drew, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Drew, you're going to communicate that to Al, so I guess
We spoke about it last week.
Okay, so I mean, we just have to get it out to the, to the holdouts. Do you know exactly, and if I may, Madam Chair, I know I'm expanding on this, but what's the deadline that we're under right now when it comes to the Corps?
Whenever the Corps decides to pull the plug.
Yeah. It's still June 30th is the official cutoff. And what I think what Al had said was, um, I'm sorry, I was reading something. Uh, what Al had said was, is that at the time that they actually design it, because they haven't designed it yet, that's when the cutoff is.
So you're telling me that the Corps
Whenever the, whenever the Corps decides to get to the design stage and they don't have all the properties, they're not going to design it because they don't want it to, you know, they say it won't work if all the properties haven't signed on. So we, the bottom line is, we don't know.
I heard two weeks, about a week and a half ago.
Well, and then we heard June 30th for how long, so.
The question is, is, I, I just, I was just curious. And I can always call Jason Hara. Um, him and I speak a lot. And I was just curious on what the critical path was when it comes to.
I would encourage you to speak with Al. He can walk you through that. And there's, there's that which Al likes to come to meetings and talks about, talk about. And there's those things that Al likes to pick up the phone and talk to you on the phone about. So I'd encourage you to talk to Al on it.
I appreciate that, Drew. I'll be happy to give Al a call.
Yeah, I, I think that's a better path right now too. Anything else?
You do have, um, the one last
There was one last comment, go ahead.
It was on, um, item two on your agenda. Uh, it was from Paul Harrington and it said, would it be appropriate to have Citizen and Larry to have a one-on-one style meeting to clear the air? And that's it.
A little late for that. Um, I had another comment from Care Paget to reiterate the motion that we just passed. And Penny, would you mind doing that?
Wait, would you, since Eric kind of leaned on what I'd already proposed, would you rather I just go through and, and tell you how I understood it since he incorporated what I had proposed?
Yeah.
And so I took that motion as a direction to the city attorney to develop a program to provide for the payment of permit fees for doon walkovers on the private properties in both beach re-nourishment projects. Uh, that would be for a five-year period, one-time use only. So if you have to, if you build and then reconstruct in that same five-year period, you would only get one. That's what I proposed. That's what Eric incorporated. You will actually, as I said, see that again because tonight you were just directing for the write-up of the program. You will actually still vote again whether or not you implement that program. So that was, that was
And Drew, if I may, and, and Madam Chair, keep in mind that we're talking about the Corps project, which is only 2.6 miles out of the 6.2 miles of Flagler Beach. Am I correct, Drew?
We're talking, as I said earlier, we were talking both Corps and non-Corps project.
Okay, so
The deal is that the county was going to piggyback on when the, all the machinery and everything is here for the Army Corps project, they were going to have that same group do the project on the north side and the sand source and all that, the, the pumper.
Yeah.
So if they end up not doing the project on the south side, they're not going to do the project on, the county will not do the project on the north side either.
I just want to make sure I'm clear when I advise the building department. That's all I was asking.
All right.
So I'll let, I'll let Rick know.
Well, we didn't vote on it.
Right now, it's just direction to me to draw up the program. So you don't have to, there still will be implementation of the program and there will be a vote on that before it actually becomes formal, Larry. So there's no changes today.
Okay.
Okay, Penny, do you know what the fees are? Is it like $75 or something?
Uh, I would say, because part of it is based on cost of the project. So I would say anywhere from 100 to 200, maybe 250. I would, I mean, I'm not exactly sure, but, um.
Oh, so there's not a set fee for doon crossovers?
Well, there's a set fee for that type of work, but then there's also a portion of the cost is involved in the fee for the permit. So that's
Okay, okay, I got you.
And then we have to keep, if I may chime in on this, we have to keep in mind that some of these properties may or may not be allowed to do doon walkovers just based on state permitting process. So let's not assume every property that's a holdout is going to be allowed to actually do a doon walkover. That's going to be up to the state.
It isn't only those 13 or however many that it is at this point.
They have to be permitted first by DEP to actually, and it's not about the turtle season. It's not about anything like that. To do those, then our local building department steps in when it comes to submitting the design and getting approved. And that's where, correct me if I'm wrong, Drew, but that's where the fees we're talking about.
We are only talking about the city's permit.
The city itself. So not every property potentially will have the ability. We don't know that. But not every property will potentially have the ability. Sorry about that. But not every property will have the ability potentially to do a doon walkover.
Uh, Rick.
Yeah, uh, how long is this going to take to put together, Drew?
Uh, my hope is to be able to get it and have it on your next agenda, or this coming agenda to get to Penny in time to get it on Thursday's agenda.
This Thursday, not, not two weeks down the road.
April 20.
All right, one more question here, even though we're already done, but, um, even though, how many, how many crossovers would it be? I know that we had 53 total citywide.
That was, that was city-owned.
The 53 are city-owned?
Yeah.
I thought they were 53, oh, now they're
No ma'am, just city-owned, we had 53.
And how many others are there?
Uh, I don't have that inventory.
Okay.
I think the city owned about half of the Corps project, if I remember right, but that could be off.
We had 75, I think, of the A1A property. Something, 78, something number Al would know for sure, but.
Okay.
Yeah, somewhere around 80, I believe. Every, every private, uh, easement that they've gotten is eligible to put a, a walkover on it. That is, uh, unless like Larry indicated, uh, they can't get permitted by the state agencies.
Okay. All right, I don't think we have any more, no. And Penny, did you get any more emails?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Okay, look for a motion to adjourn.
Before you do that, can I ask for permission to do something?
Yes, if you ask nicely.
I would like to draft a resolution also for Thursday's agenda just dealing with what you've already incorporated on face coverings during meetings where we spell out the alternatives for viewing, the alternatives for speaking. And so, and just kind of a, an exercise in getting the message out, getting the message for alternatives out to try to, and once you're back live, to have it very clear to everybody the what, when, and how.
While you bring that up, I've had some people ask me about tomorrow night's Parbor, uh, Lambert Avenue meeting. Can we demand that only people with masks be there?
Well, that is the policy, the administrative policy that was adopted for this room.
Yes, it was.
Face coverings and, and temperature taking and hand sanitizer. And I mean, if they have claim medical, I'm kind of
Well, and that's where the alternatives for viewing and participating come in. And that's why I'd like to do the resolution.
That doesn't help us for tomorrow.
Thank you, Drew.
That doesn't
Can I ask Drew a question?
One second. That doesn't help us for tomorrow though, right?
That's right.
Hey, uh, Rick.
Drew, how does the county get away with not letting anybody even in their building without a face mask? Why, why can't we just stop them at the door and not let them in?
And that's actually something that after the last meeting, the chief and I talked about. I think you will see at your next meeting that there is an officer at the door. And that is what a lot of government buildings have gone to is there's somebody at the door and you don't come into the building without putting that mask on first.
And, and if they were to take it off, they would be ejected.
The conflict starts.
Thank you.
And if they were, if they were to take it off, they would be ejected.
And that's why I'd like to do that resolution, not even so much that, that you need it for the authority because again, you have adopted the order. But what that resolution will do is give me an opportunity to spell out very clearly for everyone in the public that there are alternatives to being live. There are ways to participate. There's ways of being live even, you know, we have a process for bringing people in. If they don't or can't, don't want to or can't wear a mask, they can stand outside and watch outside until it's their opportunity at the podium and the city clerk will go and get them. You have established all these policies. I really want the opportunity to draft those whereas clauses where we can create the legislative file that shows, and we have a piece of paper that we can provide to somebody and say, here are all your alternatives.
So, so Drew, you're going to communicate with, uh, Matt to ensure that we
And I had that conversation at the last meeting. I'll make sure that he still remembers it.
I can't, I just want to make sure you communicate to make sure Matt does it properly. That's the main thing when it comes to going into the chambers, that what Matt is entitled to do. Now, if he doesn't do his job, that's, that's something that you as a board need to get on to me about. But as long as Matt's very clear for his officers, whether it's a Parbor meeting or any other meeting, I, I, I really appreciate you communicating with him to make sure he is. On how are we supposed to handle it? I see a smile on your face, so what's the problem?
Larry answered your question. Matt and I talked about it.
Perfect.
Okay. Eric?
So just for clarification, what I'm hearing is that potentially, I mean, not that we're doing it, but potentially we could do a live Thursday meeting. They, because that policy is already in place, even though the resolution all it does is add clarity, the policy's in place, correct?
Correct. But Penny's already, Penny, you've noticed Thursday for Zoom though, correct?
Yes, I have. Yes, can you hear me now?
We are.
Anybody else have anything? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.
Bye.